First on the agenda is Buzz Chu.
The opportunity, the morning. Berg Trog, 2317 Monteluk Highway, Bridge Hampton. At the last meeting, the board really narrowed the issues for us. We've investigated opportunities to try and improve the site plan. I think we've done that in the issues where the board wanted us to. So I'm just gonna put the plan out and run through it. Okay, to orient everyone, we're here, this is Ken Roach and I at Flying Point Road. Buzz Chu lot, and then the neighborhood. So, I guess we'll start just in the corner, or we'll start, I think, with probably the biggest issue for the neighbors is we have changed the blockade here and here. We are leaving the cones, hopefully, in that area here. The blockade will look like this. And this was a picture of it this morning at the dealership. They bought them and installed them already. We'd like to keep the cones here to allow the police easy access. We've had the security issues that we've talked about. People gain access by cutting the fence here and coming in and messing with the cars. There's a note on the site plan that shows that, you know, a big tractor trailer or truck bringing a car cannot make that turn. So we think the cones will be effective in stopping anybody with a smaller one and the larger trucks can't get in there. With respect to the drop off, we've created a plan where it comes in this way. Truck will stop, unload, and come back out. That way, there'll be no backing up for the parts delivery truck. The neighbors asked that we reduce the number of disabled car spaces. So there's a notation here that we reduce that from six to three. There is a note that was, we had our engineer look at moving the dumpster. Were precluded from this front yard and this front yard. The only other opportunity would be, you know, meeting a setback, but it's actually closer to these two lots by doing this. That's the best location for it. And again, we've proposed to, and have for the last several years, had the garbage trucks come later. And I think those are the changes that we have. The other thing that I think the board asked us to do, and it was Chairman London, was to look at a fence that we could put up there. We have a ten-foot PVC fence, which we got an estimate for $139,600 to install, which is cost prohibitive for the dealership.
Isn't there a cedar?
There is.
Stockade, cedar stockade fence there now. What's the height of that?
I think it's six feet.
Okay.
And those are proposed changes to the site plan. I have copies for everyone, I'll give to Alex.
Questions, anyone? Thank you.
Do we have, just while, do you have any updates to the CNRs that you propose?
Again, this board has to come to a decision. You put the conditions into the decision, and then I'll write the covenant and review it with you. But I need some guidance before I, before I'm drafting a covenant.
So would you like us to review the physical site plan, come back with proposed language for the CNRs?
Make a decision. I mean, I know this is the first time you're seeing it, so you're gonna need some time. I know we've gotta come back, but title of the presses. But then in a decision, we condition it on the particular changes to it and we draft it.
Any questions, board members?
The neighbors. You've met with the neighbors many times, I think.
Individually?
Individually, separately, groups, the fellows ahead of the association.
And we've spoken on the phone.
And have, just for the information, is there a recent meeting?
No.
Interesting people have considered this plan detailed.
No.
I mean, this has been ongoing, it's every?
It has been ongoing. Buzz Chu themselves have met with the neighbors.
Okay.
I have met with neighbors and their then council. But there hasn't been a recent meeting, and they really weren't ready for one. This was done today, it's finished today.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions if nobody else does. So, the parts truck comes in at the, yeah, and drops off in front of the building, correct?
Right, it's gonna be left at the port cochere here.
Okay. What happens to after-hours delivery of disabled vehicles?
They come in here.
So they pull in that same entrance that the parts truck comes in, drop off the vehicle?
And, yeah, they do have to back it in.
They do have to back up.
There's no, there's no way to avoid that.
Yeah. Okay. And then the dumpster, you're proposing to leave back there in the corner, right, where it is?
Yeah, where it is.
But didn't you say earlier that 10:00 AM, they won't pick up before?
Right, correct, yes, we'll put that in the covenant.
Yep, okay.
Changes to the covenant.
Okay, good, thank you. I believe the public hearing is still open on this, right? So we could, if there are other comments, we can, we can hear those. Any other people like to comment on the Buzz Chu application?
Good afternoon, John Scagnelli at Carriage Lane. As you know, you've had several pieces of correspondence from me. I'd like to offer just a few rhetorical thoughts as you consider the application. What are the consequences of installing charging stations before planning board application and approval? How will access to only Buzz Chu customers and only during permitted business hours be controlled? Will this inevitably turn into yet another trust us situation, only to be followed by yet more disappointment? Why are the cones and barriers placed halfway to the rear of the property on the east side? I would say it's more for the convenience of the dealership than out of consideration for the neighbors keeping that barrier all the way to the front, as is done on the other side. Does it demonstrate a genuine concern for neighbors? What are the consequences of completely clearing an entire southerly lot without proper permits or village knowledge? Of virtually all vegetation, opening up Dunes neighbors line of sight to North Highway, as well as removing sound blockage thereby increasing noise? We've made several attempts to sit down and talk about some of these things. They've been rejected over the course of the last several months. David is correct, there have been a number of meetings with Brian and his sister, and with David, and the council we retained initially, but nothing recently to try to work out accommodations. One such accommodation, I wonder, with that cleared southerly lot that apparently belongs to Buzz Chu? Are there opportunities to move the dumpster into that property and close it to the North Highway, away from the neighbors' windows and not impeding the front of the dealership and the side of the dealership? That's just one example. Where and when does the village validate the effectiveness of any expanded controls and restrictions, especially in light of the failures of existing restrictions? How can the village consider any amendment to the existing special exception and covenant with so many demonstrated and reported failures? In essence, evidence over nearly two years suggests that the off-hour violations cannot be sufficiently controlled by simple letter writing and management requests. Almost done. These are just a few reasons why I encourage the village to resist and reject any and all modifications to the existing special exception and covenants, until such time as impacts a thoroughly outlined and controls proposed with a period of demonstrated effectiveness. You're obviously able to rule on any change not limited to the special exception, but I certainly encourage the village to do the right thing, reject all aspects of this application at this time, and seek to consider a more comprehensive proposal with more effective controls in the future, once we've got a chance to talk about mutual ideas and concerns around this. Those are the thoughts, thank you very much for your time.
Hopefully quickly, the reason the barriers are located there, so we can bring the disabled cars and have space to maneuver them to put them in. There's no ill intent. The clearing on the southerly lot has nothing to do with this application, right? Separate application, separate property, can't be considered. Moving the dumpster to that, there's no primary use there, I wonder if we could even do it, but we'd certainly have to go through a site plan process to do that. You know, there have been meetings, after the last meeting, I was approached by one of the homeowners who said, would you meet with us? And I said, absolutely, call me, and I'm available, we have some ideas, and I'd be happy to give them to you. They never reached out. And it just, you know, one of the things that I think is going on here and is creating an issue, is that Buzz Chu is being blamed for the ills of 39 by the Neighborhood Association. The last nine complaints, and I've submitted them to you, have been unfounded. The slamming of some tailgate that was recounted at the last hearing was the garbage across the street at one of those auto dealerships. I really believe Buzz Chu is pretty quiet at night. They're not bringing the trucks in. Every once in a while, and I don't think it happens often, they bring the disabled car. That's the only thing that's going on, but they're getting blamed for everything that's happening. I've been there, I've been there at night when it's quiet, and you can hear everything that's going on in the neighborhood. And I think that's the challenge, that the, you know, the Neighborhood Association can't do anything about the businesses across the street, because that's the town, right? This is the one place where there's jurisdiction in the village, and I think we're getting blamed for the ills in the neighborhood.
Could you respond to the comment, if I heard it correctly, about clearing of landscaping and?
That's on the other lot. That's on the southerly lot, that's not a part of this application. And the village has addressed it with us, and we're in justice court dealing with it.
All right. All right, that's clear. Anyone else? Thank you. Please.
Hi, my name is Lori Nenright, thank you for hearing me. I'm a resident in the Dunes, South Hampton Village. I stand before you today to ask you to please not change any, any conditions of the special exception given and granted to Buzz Chu in 2000. My plea underscores the need for accountability and adherence to the agreement set forth, the special use permit, when it was originally presented to them. It's apparent that the homeowners' Dunes residents are deeply affected by the ongoing disruptions, violations by Buzz Chu. And we are and continue to advocate for the protection of our rights and quality of life. Our suggestions presented to the board for finding alternative solutions for issues like overnight deliveries and relocating the dumpster, which seems to be a challenge. Sorry. I just wanna read so that I stay clear. And our willingness to compromise while still advocating for the protection of our residents' rights and well-being. I would ask each and every one of you, if this situation were reversed and you were standing here today, I believe you would be advocating for your property as well. I do not believe for one minute that any of you would put up with cars being delivered at all hours of the night and constant banging two, three, or four o'clock in the morning, which you have heard on recordings and videos. I have videos at home from what Mr. Gil Martin just said. I have, actually, I get in my car sometimes and I go just to prove that it is on Buzz Chu's lot. So, anything that is being questioned, I can show you a video. It's essential for all of us to carefully consider the testimonies, evidence presented by the residents when making decisions about permits and land use. Our voices, along with the numerous letters of support from homeowners, from fellow homeowners, serve as a crucial reminder of the importance of community and well-being, and the need for responsible, considerate business practices. It is with this sentiment that I continue to stand here before you and ask you, please, to deny any requests by Buzz Chu outside the original scope of the permit of 2000. We have been victims for years and years, and we need to ensure that regulatory decisions prioritize well-being of the Dunes community. Before Buzz Chu, we were here first, they came in second. If I can just respond.
Chair, would you like to give it a different time?
Three minutes are up, I'll give you 30 seconds, okay?
Okay, I came in and saw the possibility of moving the dumpster. That wouldn't be an option to move it closer to my home, so just wanna put that on the record. And I also just wanna say this, that any improvements that Brian and Marilyn Chu have been making, that's called compliance. That's all, it's not a pat on the back, they're just being compliant. So I don't think any accolades need to be given for them doing the right thing, and I think that that's all really I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this application? Okay, so the public hearing is still open on this, I'm gonna roll, make a motion to roll, leave it open.
Correct, so we can review.
Digest this, review it, and roll this to the next meeting, June 17th, where I would expect to bring it to a vote. Can I have a motion to adjourn this to the next meeting?
Motion.
Thank you, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is 54 Main Street. I have a conflict on this one, so I'm going to recuse myself from this, but in order to do that, we're gonna put this at the end of the agenda, because I have to step out for that. So we'll do this at the very end of the meeting, so I'm not in and out, I just have to step out once. So we'll skip over this for now, put that at the ends, and move on to 560 Wickapog.
If I may, John Bennett, for the applicant, we're primarily, hopefully, here just to listen to you, but I just wanna make sure that everyone got my, received my June 3rd letter.
So, before you start, John, the hearing is closed on this.
That's for the public.
I understand. I'm happy to listen for three minutes, okay?
No, I'm the applicant, there's no three-minute bar, that's for the public.
If you have something new to say, what are we gonna do with what was recently submitted?
So, as Mr. Bennett did indicate, a letter was sent out earlier today around 2:00 PM. I have not had a chance to review it, I can do so when we have adequate time, but it did appear this afternoon.
All right. The floor is yours, John.
What are we doing with this application? The, you know, Mr. Fowler's here, his wife, Mr. Warren is here. You voted on a sketch plan approval?
Three minutes ago, two minutes ago, which was it?
And we don't have it. Someone's missing what sketch plan approval was all about, and as I say in my letter, this is the code definition of sketch plan approval, is to enable the subdivider to save time and expense in reaching a general agreement with the planning board as to form layout and objectives. Does anybody have an op, does anybody have an objection to the layout of the lots or the ag reserve? I'm entitled to know that, it doesn't appear that there has been any objection to that. So I'm entitled to know that.
I think we're gonna discuss that is when you're finished.
Okay, so you're gonna discuss the proposed pending resolution for the sketch plan approval.
Can you also refresh my memory, because I do not remember voting on a sketch plan. I know we took a straw poll. But I do not believe that we voted on a sketch plan, is that correct?
Well, you should.
That's to my understanding, and we did have just?
I think I surveyed the board to see if we had a consensus, so we could move this forward.
That was over a month ago.
I was there, I remember that. So, what I would like to do is open up to the board members, ask questions, we can discuss this. I think that I'm sensitive to the fact that this has been in front of the board for a very long time. And the code, the village code is pretty specific on sketch plans, right? It's a layout, it's supposed to provide a general consensus.
I have a language here, which I believe Mr. Bennett just recited, but I can give it again. Section 97.7, purpose, the sketch plan shall be required to enable the subdivider to save time and expense in reaching a general agreement with the planning board as to the form, layout, and objections, objectives of the subdivision regulations.
Yes, thank you. So I think that's pretty clear, we've had a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth on exactly what this should look like. And I think there haven't been any new issues that have come up in the last meeting or two. So I think all the issues are out on the table, right? All the key points for board members are out on the table. So, what I'd like to do is kind of review at a high level what those issues are, and survey the board to see if they have any questions, and get their temperature on each of the key points that we've been discussing up to now. With respect to the site plan, or the sketch plan, sorry, that we've seen, I think that, I'm aware that everyone is comfortable with the overall layout. That is, the number of lots, the size of the lots, the setbacks included on that sketch plan, the size of the ag reserve, the positioning of the ag reserve. Anybody feel differently, that they'd like to see something else on that one? Okay, so if we can check that box. Yes, can you raise your hand if you're comfortable with the sketch plan that we've seen?
You just outlined this one.
Raise your hand, okay, thank you. We've said from the very beginning that we're all trying to do what's best for the village, we're all good citizens here. We've got to figure out a way to provide access to the pond, should it need to be cleaned or addressed, right? And that's still something that the board, I believe, is very important to each of the five board members. Can you raise your hand if that is an important issue to you, and you'd like to see a solution to that that works for everyone?
Resident, half a hand, it is a solution that isn't necessarily resident or the applicant. There's several solutions, and that, they're being worked on, and there are lots of wisdom to be applied.
Yes.
A distraction about our constitutional rights in enforcing the applicant to do it is, to me, another tail being wagged for the dog. So it will be solved, it has to be solved for the F and C trustees, has to be solved for the village trustees, these lakes are a problem. It will be solved, and it's being worked on now, to my knowledge.
Yeah, and I know everyone's working very diligently on this issue, and we're approaching it, or they, that group is approaching it from a couple of different directions. You know, we're optimistic that one of those directions is going to be a solution that works for everyone. But through the show of hands, I think everyone's, it's an important issue for the board going forward. The next issue is that west entrance, there's been some discussion about closing that west entrance. I think that the best way to articulate the west entrance issue is, the board views that as a safety concern, right? So it should either be closed, or the applicant should come back with a alternative design that addresses the aesthetic and the safety issues. Everyone agree with that point, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. The next issue, I believe, that we've talked about is the viewscape, or that area between the Barnes and Wickapog Road, and having some kind of landscape plan. The applicant has shown us some plans that are close, not quite there, but is everyone on board with having the applicant provide some landscaping plan there that is satisfactory to the board? Raise your hand if you'd like to see that.
I have it, I have it ultimately.
Okay, okay. The next issue is the viewscape looking into the agricultural component of the reserve, so that's south of the driveway off of Fowler Street. That is not the yard there, but the area south of that, so that as you're driving down Fowler Street, you're, and you look to your left, just going south on Fowler toward the beach, you look to your left, you can see all the nursery stock that's being grown there. But if you look to your right, you're looking at Privet. And I think a number of board members have suggested that that Privet should, could be taken down, so that you have the same view on the right side as you currently do on the left side. Everybody, raise your hand if that's something that you'd like to see. Okay? And then the last issue, which has been the difficult one, is that we will have an ag reserve, that ag reserve has been shown on the sketch plan. I think that we've gotten tripped up a little bit by getting very deep into the details at a sketch plan, preliminary sketch plan stage of a three-step process, and, you know, this is supposed to be a high-level general consensus. So I think that, you know, I'd like to redirect our efforts on this, so that the ag reserve that we would approve at the sketch plan stage would be limited to a conservation easement or an agricultural easement for the proposed 25% of the property, which is approximately 310,000 square feet. And that ag reserve, the details of which we will address as we get to the next stage of the process.
An agreement shall be reached.
An agreement shall be reached, thank you. I'd like to survey each board member to see if there are any points, any specifics beyond just that general ag reserve statement that I just made, that they'd like to see at the sketch plan stage, sketch plan approval stage. I'm gonna start on my right with Debbie, is there anything else specifically that you need now to move forward towards a vote on a preliminary sketch plan? Thank you. Amanda, anything?
I'm just curious if you are talking about as well the covenants and restrictions that will ultimately be included. We have a general sense of what we'd like to see in those. But with respect to this statement, this is the ag easement, this is the 25%, this is the position, and it will be, that will, whatever language?
At the preliminary stage.
Look, what you said, that will be agreed to.
An agreement shall be reached.
We will have covenants and restrictions.
Yes.
And those are to be determined, we've sort of mapped them out, but I wanna make sure that will be part of the agreement, obviously.
Covenants and restrictions will be part of it, right.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, just like we're talking about, the easement will be determined, the covenant restrictions will be determined.
Absolutely.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Absolutely, and most of those are out on the table.
They are, they are.
Everyone's heard them, so there shouldn't be any surprises, but it's all to be determined as we move towards step two, a preliminary plan. Mr. McFarlane, anything else?
As long as it's agreed, I believe it is by the applicant, and most of its advisors, if not all. It is a separate step, it is not this approval as much as we can to get going with the lots and everything, doesn't control the next step. There's work to be done, knowledge to be transferred. The main reason being that the Fowler family are screwed. They're sort of the last gasp before the turnpike. This is the last sort of farm and it's sort of the tail wagging the dog. And so it just has to be done for the village, not for the town. It's just stuck in the village and the bonds, nothing else. It's a, it's a degree of difficulty, it's not what we want, but we have to discharge for the larger, the plan and the village. It's the context. This is not the approval of that in principle. The details are very important, the second step.
Understood. So at this point, in order to move from, to a preliminary sketch plan approval, other than a high-level, the content of the conservation agreement, agriculture easement that I read, read being the size and in the position to say that you're fine, you don't need to see any other detail. Thank you, Mr. Dye.
Nothing more, Mr. Chairman.
I think, I think those were all the points at a high level, I didn't miss anything, right, John? Right?
Let's take a look.
I think that was everything.
Yep, that was everything with the exception, which is required anyway, applicant shall submit the long EIA.
All right, so what I'd like to propose then is that what we just discussed is put into a resolution that circulates this week and we adjourn this to a vote on the seventeenth based on what we just discussed, okay?
If I may, it would be exceedingly helpful if that resolution, unlike what happened the last time, is available. It's not a difficult resolution to draft. Is available at least a week before the meeting.
Yeah, I think I was pretty clear, we're going to have it, can you get it done?
Chairman, would you like me to direct me to release it to applicants' counsel?
Yeah, we can release that as soon as, as soon as, yeah, as soon as we're ready to and the game plan is to have that to you by the end of the week.
And then everyone agrees that this is a public benefit in terms of this pond issue, correct? It's a public benefit you're trying to solve. To get access to the pond.
You're almost as expert as I might be on the F and C trustees and ponds.
Yeah.
It is an art, it is an issue of great sophistication with the law of eighteen fifteen and everything. It's really complicated, but the F and C trustees, I believe, as practiced through the village, needs to have access to the pond.
For a public benefit.
I don't know if we would, if we would couch in words of a public benefit.
He's a Yale Law School graduate.
Trustee benefit, okay. This is the practice under the laws dealing with the dung and F and C, I call them the F and C.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
What exists now is a pipe, as you said eloquently four times last meeting, a pipe to fill the pond up from the top. We have to deal with, we, all the community have to deal with the F and C trustees to get access to the pond if needed for all the issues that relate to ponds.
Okay.
Everything from pollution to filling up, that's the issue.
And I did hear, and I did hear you say that there were other avenues being explored by the village.
To my knowledge, to my direct knowledge, it's none of my business, it's none of the planning board's business. There are several people, we've got several avenues.
Okay, great. I want to respond to that. I don't believe, I don't think we're expert enough to know an answer to your question yet, right? So I don't think that's true.
So you, there are members on this board of law degrees and you have a council of a law degree. I want you all to read my letter of June third in terms of this access issue. And I've done something which I hope you'll, will be very happy with what I've done.
Thank you, John.
I've got all, with a page on it, a copy of probably the most amazing document that's ever been drafted other than the legal, in the hands, that is the Constitution of the United States. And if you look at page, I've, I've been, I've, I've, I've kind of just to point you to the right page, which is page forty-four, amendment five, I've underlined it. Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. Court of Appeals, Supreme Court of the United States, case written by Justice Marshall, hardly someone who one would consider a property rights conservative. And it's very interesting, that case, because, you know, you look, you look, you look, you keep looking for these cases and ultimately you find them. And what you will find is in that case, which is cited in my decision, rather in my case, here the government's attempt to create a public right of access to the improved pond goes so far beyond ordinary regulation or improvement as to amount to a taking. In this case, we hold that the right to exclude, so universally held to be a fundamental element of the property right, falls within this category of interest that the government cannot take without compensation. Rather, the imposition of the easement, and it was an easement, in this context will result in an actual physical invasion of private property. And even if the government physically invades only an easement in property, it must nevertheless pay for compensation. What you're trying to do is to take a public concern, and I'm not critical of that, but it's not your job. If the trustees of the village want to look at this, they should. We've, we've talked about other ways to go about this. If the trustees of the freeholders and commonality of the town, which includes the village, want to look at this, they should. But this is not, there is no nexus between what's being proposed here. You don't even have to get to the constitutional issue, that Mackel versus White case shows you that. And if you reread the case the council provide for you, you'll see that it has absolutely no applicability here. Because in that case, it actually, it actually, what it does is it supports our position because one of the things that the Court of Appeals was very, very, very strident about in allowing the covenants that were required in there without compensation was the property owner retain the right to exclude third persons. So it's literally like I'm holding up a placard that's painted blue and you folks are saying it's red. That's how crystal clear it is. You can't, as a result of a condition, a proposed condition in a subdivision, require my client to get public access, which is not to say that you're not, I'm not criticizing you for being concerned about the issue. Excuse me? I'm not criticizing you for being concerned about the issue. But really, the people that should be concerned about the issue are the trustees of the village, the mayor and the trustees of the village, and the trustees of the commonalty and freeholders of the town, who actually are probably the owners of the bond, despite the fact that the tax map says that the village is the owners, probably the trustees. We went to the real property tax services and we couldn't find any chain of title going back to anybody but the trustees. It just seemed to, it seemed to arrive back in the early eighties as shown as ownership by the village, but only because Real Property Tax Service just said that. But that's irrelevant. Agawam is owned by the trustees, I don't know if you folks know that, but Lake Agawam is owned by the trustee, well, Alan, you know that. Lake Agawam is owned by the trustees, the commonalty and freeholder, and the village and the trustees have always had a very good relationship about that. And so have the other, other ponds. But I ask you to take a look at that and I ask you to get me the resolution as quickly as possible so we can maybe work through these things before, 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 in a concise, concise matter. But I thank you for acknowledging that from a lot layout point of view and from the size and location of the open space, the proposal works. Thank you, thank you very much for that, yes.
May I ask Mr. Bennett a question?
Sure.
It seems like this would have been asked and answered, but I'm going to ask you. Do you know, is the pond polluted? Has it been tested?
It's irrelevant.
Do we know? Well, I just, do you know?
It's irrelevant.
To this discussion?
It's irrelevant.
I'm just, there's so many people thinking about it, I wondered if it had ever been done. I thought perhaps.
Yeah, no.
I think that'd be a hard thing to quantify.
No, just hasn't been tested.
And again, I'm.
Not, not that that's, this is, you're talking about a separate thing, but I was just wondering if we wanted to.
There have been six subdivisions surrounding this pond and the board has never tried to demand access, six different subdivisions. And again, it's because everybody knew you couldn't do that. The problematic thing is that probably is a much easier way to get access because the Fowler family down at the southerly end of Fowler Street, on the, on the west side of Fowler Street, actually dedicated two parcels to the village as well as the road. And there's a short run to there. I would suggest that the, that the, that the, that the board in an advisory manner suggested to the trustees that they look at, look into that and approach that. It would be much, much, much easier. I understand that the concept is to try to get an algae harvester down there. You're not going to get that down there on a fifteen-foot access point. It's, it's just really, it's really trying to fit a round peg into a square hole. Plus you have this incredible issue with it. But thanks very much. And again, I want, I want you to understand that I'm not being critical of your concern. It's just whether or not your attempt to get there is legitimate. I don't think it's your problem. I don't think the state of subdivision regulations and the village subdivision regulations is clear. It's not, you don't have to believe me, I gave you the case law. You don't have the ability to condition on that. But anyway, we'll leave it in your hands.
Thank you, John. We're trying to move this forward because it has been here a while and.
And I also appreciate.
Appreciate, we're going to get a resolution drafted as soon as we can and get it circulated to you as quickly as we can. The goal is to have it done by the end of the week. I hope we can stick to that deadline and then we'll put this to a vote on our June seventeenth meeting. Do I need to make a motion to do that?
Motion to adjourn it to seventeenth.
Yeah, motion to, before we do that motion, thank you for this. I had one, my father-in-law wanted it, I gave it to him.
Good.
I'm glad I got it, I'm glad I got one back.
We appreciate the gesture, we do.
I don't necessarily agree with.
If you want fifty of them, I was, for decades, building the National Constitution Center in Philadelphia. You want them, I'll give you fifty. I read them all the time. It's irrelevant.
So.
I hope you've done all that for free.
So there, yeah, so there are at least three up here with legal degrees. I did not, I do not have one.
Read them.
I have researched this, I don't necessarily agree with your case law on this, but I'm going to yield, I appreciate the.
Case law then.
Yep, but I'm going to yield to an expert in land use law here. But thank you, we're going to try and move this along.
The only thing I ask you is if you, it's easy to say I disagree. What's not easy is to get authority. So if you have some authority, I'll listen to it, of course. Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm sure you will. Motion to adjourn.
Till seventeen.
Till the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Next on the agenda is Wool Hill LLC, seven eighty-three Hill Street. Anyone here far back?
This is for Hill Street. You know what, I think it's probably the best thing to do on this because the, Mr. McLaughlin passed away, the estate is being handled, why don't we just withdraw it without prejudice as opposed to carrying it on?
Okay, that's fine, that's good.
You see a motion for that?
So motion to withdraw this application without prejudice.
No, without prejudice.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
So Conamara, we're going to adjourn to the July first? Okay, motion to adjourn Conamara Corp. to July first. Second, all in favor? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And just by way of explanation, I'm still waiting for the building inspector's review on that. That's what's holding it up, whether or not I have to go to the zoning board. So I will, I will gingerly request a peg. That's usually what I do with the building inspector.
The question before the building inspector is whether this is a zoning board issue or a planning board issue?
Oh, no, I'd still have to go, I have to go here because I'm changing the lot line. The question is whether I have to go to the zoning board as well.
Okay.
I think it, 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 it turns on whether or not the revised definition of a flag lot applies only to a flag lot that is to be created as opposed to an existing flag lot.
Got it, okay.
It's, that's, I'm just trying to.
So we'll see you on July first on this one. Eight sixty-five Merrick Holdings, twenty-two Windmill Lane.
I think you should have received the German letter for this one. Liz Vale, Greenberg, Traurig, twenty-three seventeen Montauk Highway. We had sent in a German letter earlier today. Because it's pending at ZBA.
Okay.
So while the matter's open before ZBA, it's best to pursue that and then come back to the board once it's resolved.
Yeah, we'll just, a motion to, Liz, do you want to adjourn this to the seventeenth or the?
Yes, the second meeting would be better.
The next meeting.
The seventeenth, thank you.
Yeah.
Second meeting of this month or?
The next, the next month.
July seventeenth.
Oh, July seventeenth.
The second meeting in July would be great.
That would be.
Yes, I think because it's pending before ZBA.
Fifteenth, yep.
Okay, so motion to adjourn twenty-two Windmill Lane, which is eight sixty-five Merrick Holdings, to the July fifteenth meeting.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Brian Kelly, twenty to, twenty thirty County Road thirty-nine A.
I don't believe they have a German question on this, but I know they're preparing their ZBA application.
ZBA.
They also have to go to the zoning board for it.
So why don't we roll this one to mid-July? Because that's going to be a while, right? The ZBA.
Yeah, they don't, they don't.
Okay, motion to adjourn Brian Kelly to, also to the July fifteenth meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seventy-four White Street.
I did receive a correspondence from the applicant that they're working with the health department to move this along. So they asked that it be carried on to the next meeting.
So they want to go to the seventeenth of June? They think they're going to be ready by then?
I believe he said to the, to the next meeting.
Okay.
Seventeen June.
Seventeen, motion to adjourn seventy-four White Street to June seventeenth meeting. Second, thank you Debbie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirty-six Windmill Lane.
Shippeys.
Shippeys.
Hi, I'm Lisa Zaloga, I'm the architect for Shippeys. I believe that John Betts is on Zoom, he unfortunately is at the airport. And so he would like to speak to you first, so hopefully you can let him in.
Some of your letter writers got bored and left.
Okay. Maybe they were hungry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, super, super. Well, I'll try to be very brief. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening and I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. Lisa's going to carry the ball as she usually does during our sessions. But good evening, Chairman London and the planning board members. My name's John Betts, a resident public who hasn't had an opportunity to meet owner of Shippeys and we're here to follow up on a planning meeting we had with the board about a month and a half ago, I believe. And we had great guidance and lots of thoughts from Nelson Pope and Workons and I, hopefully, I believe we have a complete application in front of all of the team today. And so I wanted to speak to that. And secondly, I want to put this in perspective for everybody. You know, Shippeys underwent an extensive remodel, took about a year to do. The planning board was part of that process when we began that, as was the ARB. And I want to thank you for all the guidance you provided us at that point. What we have in front of you, and I think we, I wanted to just clarify something, we have two more phases of Shippeys coming. What we have in front of you right now, we're calling Shippeys two dot O. And that's really about the functionality of the restaurant. It's about expansion of the restaurant's kitchen and some bathrooms and some things that make it more comfortable and easy for our guests to use and our employees to be able to serve the public. And I think when we talked before with this board. And I think when we talked before with this board, because I've given the long-term vision, I think we've had some confusion, probably my fault, because we also talked enthusiastically about the end product. And so what we're talking about today, according to the bylaws and everything, does not require us to get into the more in-depth conversation that we need to have and that we will have with you guys very soon. And by that, I mean additional parking or anything to do with the septic system. We are already in the midst of those conversations with, at least on the septic side, with the consultants that Lisa has brought in and talking about them with Southern County. So we can come back to you with a complete discussion about Phase 3. We have some very small parking adjustments we've made as part of Shippeys 2.0. That's really, it's, it could be noticeable on the site plan. So I really want to say that we're going to be back to talk to you about the closing of the Beer Garden and that type of thing, which you're all aware of. You've seen the whole project. But right now, we're focused on making ourselves functional for the summer season. And I want to start by thanking Chairman London because you're the guy that put something inside my head. And it really comes down to, I hope you're all in the seat of the letter that I wrote to Chairman London last week. I think you remember the last time we had a meeting, there was some discussion about the need for public notification and additional hearing. And that it could be waived, but it's never been done. So I thought that if we had a complete submission, we thought good about the submission. If I could do some things to help give you a little enthusiasm from the public and the community that you might consider doing that. Respectfully asking for us to potentially get a waiver on the public notification and allow us to get things done very early into the project so we can make the place much more functional. Lisa will go into the details. But I wanted to share with you, we have communicated. I took ads out in the Southampton Press from West Hampton to Montauk for three weeks. We have communicated with our guests. There's a survey that I sent Mark the copy of that's in that letter as well. And, you know, everybody's on board and they're trying to make this thing work for us. And we haven't had any really negative feedback at all. In fact, I don't think one single comment that I've had from a negative construction standpoint. So I guess I'll leave it there. I think the other thing that we think about this was that we did, before the ZBA, we had a 25- or 30-day posting. So we've actually been in a public awareness, I'd say, for probably over two months now. And so just if we meet the screens today in terms of a complete public hearing application, I just want, I'd ask you to please consider that. And I'll turn things over to Lisa. Sorry for going on.
Hi. So I sent in, after we got back Nelson Pope and Voorhees' request for more information, we modified the survey and sent everything back. And I sent that back in the beginning of May. I believe that you got it. And I'm hoping that you were able to deem it complete, but I haven't heard anything back. So that would be one thing. Because obviously, that would be the first step in anything. The other thing I would just say is with regard to the notifications and something that was in my letter that I submitted back in early May, I said that we were in front of the zoning board. We now have approval from the zoning board for our addition. We've also gone in front of the trustees and gotten approval for the Phase 3 portion. So they've also seen the Phase 2. And I also have a letter from Rotations, Rick. So as I said, as John said, you know, he's had three weeks of notification. There are signs posted throughout Shippeys. There are a couple of hundreds of people that have responded. I don't think anything has ever been noticed quite as much as this has. So if we can get to the point where we're deemed complete, we would love it if you could find a way to waive the public hearing. Because we're looking for time, trying not to be under construction too far into the summer.
Understood. Do you want to respond?
Sure. So we received the revised site plan on May 13th. So what we didn't have previously was actually a site plan that showed what was on the site. We had floor plans and a map showing an outline of the addition. So the site plan actually now has all the zoning compliance that we look for. It has a proposed drainage area. It has a proposed parking, the loading space in the back. There are a few minor things that are missing still. There are no parking calculations shown. And I understand that that is because, under the code, there's no parking change because there's no addition of any restaurant seats. However, I think it's important to document the number of parking spaces that are required for the existing plan.
It is, the parking calculations are shown right here.
What, how many parking spaces are required?
You're going to ask me to read this. So it says, "Required parking, two per dwelling unit, two units, four stalls. Restaurant, one per, three permanent seats or floor area equivalent to 24 stalls. One per-" That's, that was on the survey slash 200-foot radius map-
Okay.
-that came from, yeah, no, that's, that's on, that's on there as, as again, it's all existing, pre-existing, non-conforming, but it is on-
How many total parking spaces are required?
I have to do math then. Four, 24, 28, 38, 42, 52, 53? 53?
And there's no parking spaces on the lot now?
No.
Okay.
It's, but there's no increase. It's all pre-existing, non-conforming.
And the other thing was that there is a loading space required under code now? That, I don't know if that was noted in that same location?
It's the loading space in the back of the property?
Right, right. It would have to be, show that one loading space is required. It's just a minor detail to show that.
Yeah, he calls it out as a loading space factor.
The site plan references new lighting on the exterior doors, which aren't shown. Again, these are, there are minor things. And no outdoor sound system is proposed?
Correct.
Just wanted to verify that that is not proposed, if it's not shown. And generally, when you get a plan that shows engineering done by a separate entity, there would be a letter or the plans would be stamped by the engineer showing the drainage calculations that have been verified and that they, you know, acknowledge that design. So it is just written on the plan that Armist Engineering had done the drainage calculations on the design. And that's on the Twin Forks, Twin Forks survey. And then details regarding the proposed hedge would be helpful. Is there additional details that can be provided?
Well, on the, I know you said that it's not, it's not shown on the elevations, but on the rendering, the light over the door that matches the other lights is shown. And the hedge is existing, so it would, it would stay as is.
There's another hedge that they had shown, I think on the inside? No?
No.
Okay.
There's a hedge along Rotations Wall that's existing. And there's a hedge kind of on the front of the property and up the ramp.
To remain.
And those are all to remain. As well as the, you know, they worked with the Rose Society for the roses along the north side of the building. And those won't change. Those were part of the last project.
And then typically, a site plan would be named a site plan. So that's just a minor thing. There are a couple of details that, you know, that would need to be looked at for the future. And that, but if this is before the board as it is, it's kind of, this is, this is first phase. And I'm just a little concerned about some of the issues going forward. If there's an addition and then there's a future action that's proposed for additional seating upstairs and additional outdoor seating, that, you know, we're segmenting this. And that is, you know, always a concern. So that's, that's really my, my two cents there. So-
Could I be, let me jump in on that. We're not trying to hide anything here.
Understood.
We broke the project in half so we could get the functional aspect of things taken care of for the guests and the people who are in the, during the summer. We've been pretty transparent about what we're trying to do with the Beer Garden. And if we do additional seating anywhere else in the restaurant, that would all come under the discussion of Southern County and have to be in the requirement for the building itself. And I just want to make sure that we're separating that. I think implicitly in your comments that, I'm trying to understand your last comment about us maybe having some errors that we're going to carry into the next phase. Is that, is that what I heard in this?
It's just that, that if there's going to be parking relief that's required in the future or an upgrade to the sanitary system, it's helpful for the planning board to consider the whole action, even though it is being split into several components.
Yeah. Well, we could do that if we could, we could do this for two years.
Yeah, understood.
So we're, we're trying to be, we're trying to bring life back to our village. We're trying to do things to make our, make our experience of Southampton better. And the way to do it, the easiest way and the most functional way is to break the project. It's not about hiding anything. God knows, anybody's been in Shippeys, knows the rules. We're pretty transparent in terms of talking about all that we want to help. Please don't, please don't imply that we're trying to hide something.
And I wasn't, and I wasn't at all. I wasn't.
That was not the implication at all. I think this was more of a, just making sure that it's clear to the board exactly what we're considering. And this is, a little bit falls under the genie is out of the bottle, you know? Because you've been great and transparent and showed, really transparent and showed us kind of a near-term plan and a long-term plan. We want to make sure it's crystal clear to the board and the public that it is an iterative process. There's a Stage 3, there's a Stage 4, and, well, there are a couple of stages, right? There's this interim storage area, then-
3 is good for now.
Yeah, we'll stick with 3.
We've seen other things. And we just want to be very clear what we're considering at each stage and educate everyone that we might have to consider, if you go further down the path, other things are going to be on the table. There was no implication that you're hiding. So it's actually the opposite, right? You've shown us everything.
Thank you.
We want to make sure that no one gets confused at information overload.
You just want us to help you to make the summer. I understand that. It's a seasonal place, a seasonal visit, that's easy. We've got to do something fairly special to waive quickly, which we've been asked to do. But we just want to make sure if they're following details, which you have to do as property owners, maybe they're great, that we will get a full review of them, start to affect them.
Appreciate that.
I noticed that your work was done for two inches of rain. I love two inches of rain. We had that about four times last week. Maybe two and a half inches. I mean, there's stuff to be done to get this right on, sitting on the old drain. You're in the wetlands.
Can I ask our counsel? I'm just asking, I would like to ask counsel, how typical is their comment? Is it to waive or shorten the public hearing as being as requested? Is that done?
Yep, so that is 11, or 11638 D4. So the caveat is that once the application is deemed complete, and that entails a complete completion of secret review, planning board may, at its option, require the notice of public hearing be held on said complete application, emphasis on optional. What should be known or what should be pointed out is that if we require the public hearing, then within 45 days of close of that hearing, we have to make a decision. But if we do not, if we opt to not hold the public hearing within 45 days of determining completeness, then the planning board has to make their decision from that completeness determination. So to summarize, if the code does give us the optionality of holding another public hearing or not. Does that sufficiently answer?
Would you opine on it for us, given what we have and what you would ultimately want? Is that-
I think it's a judgment call for the board. I mean, we've already had, this has been noticed, correct? We've, we have not, but I thought we've already had one noticed. Correct me if I'm wrong?
No, we, we put, we put ads in the paper.
So it's suispronte by the applicant. So this is a judgment call by the board. If the board feels this is the kind of thing that is-
That was the ad in the paper.
-that wouldn't create any sort of real public concern.
The ZBA, the ZBA, we also noticed for the ZBA. I don't know that there's-
Right, it was noticed for the ZBA as well. But, but I mean-
Maybe that's where I saw the sign.
Yeah, you know, and it's noticed currently for the ARB.
Understood.
You know, nobody came and had a problem with it at the zoning board. And this ad has run for three weeks and it's run in all three Southampton presses, not just Southampton.
East of the canal, west of the canal.
Everybody knows, as well as it's online, it's on Instagram, it's posted in the bathrooms at Shippeys. It's, no matter where you go, you're going to see this.
So these are all things that the board-
So, so, we want to be helpful here, right? But we also can't shortcut the process with an incomplete deck of information. So can you walk, because I'm confused, exactly what you need from us and what, sort of a timeline of what you're trying to achieve over the next X weeks?
Well, so our goal, I don't know if you, did you get a chance to see the plan?
I didn't get this, is that, did this come in today?
No, no, they've been in for-
This, I thought you came in with something recently.
No, no, no.
Yeah, now we've seen, we've all seen it.
The same plan, it's purely, it's a small addition to-
I've taken the plan to see him.
You walked through the plan?
I was trying to get him to change the restaurant and plan fast.
I'd like to make comments, please. So I, we submitted this on May 13th, right?
Yeah, May-
May what?
No, I was just going to say the plan hadn't changed on, by May 13th. You know, the floor plans hadn't changed. The, we submitted the extra survey information and site plan.
And take this feedback as a genuine comment to constructively help us, because I'm looking at everything that we do as contributing to the village in some fashion or another. So we got the, and perhaps it was the timing of the last review. We got the feedback from the consulting board three days before the hearing. And it had a bunch of stuff. And you know what? I put that on us. We did not do as good a job as we could. Perhaps if we had that a week before, we would have been far more complete, but we didn't. What I heard today, and I just say, if we had submitted the thing on May 13th, these four or five things were just raised, couldn't somebody have told us we were, you know, a little missing there? You know what I mean? Because we would have had all that stuff cleaned up, you know? I just feel a little funny about that.
So our proposal, purely plain and simple, is a one and a two-story addition to the east and the south side of the building to house coolers, to house extra kitchen space, and to move the three bathrooms so that they have better access for the people wandering through. If you've been to Shippeys, you know it's very tight. When we did the original project, the building, the concrete block building, had some issues. And we ended up having to put steel inside and do some things that shrunk the space a little bit more. It's very tight. The servers have problems getting through. So the goal is to get this done as quick as possible. It has no increase in occupancy. There's nothing proposed for that. It's purely service orchestrated addition.
So are you asking us to waive a public hearing and vote on this tonight?
I am asking you to waive the public hearing and vote on this tonight and come down and help build it.
You know, how do people feel about that? Right, look, you know, I think it's exciting, things are going on at Shippeys. It's, you know, really, you know, doing some great things to get, you know, more restaurants in the village.
I mean-
So, so we want to be user-friendly here, we want to help.
Our hope is that we've noticed it more than anybody ever has, so that it's not a precedent issue. The neighbor that has written a letter of support, the village is on board, those are the neighbors. It's been advertised extensively. I don't think there's anybody that doesn't- Um, it's been advertised extensively. I don't think there's anybody that doesn't know what's happening.
Yeah.
And I, and I, what, what I just, I want to go back to my comment about the, the four or five things that the consultant raised. Uh, if we knew those, and we lived on those, I mean, they didn't sound like anything very serious, uh, but we didn't know. You know, the last time we did get the notice and it was helpful, showed us where we were checking up short. And in my mind, you know, I mean, we can knock all those things out and get them to you in the next week. That would help give you a little bit more comfort rather than forcing it over something.
Well, really, I think, what is it? It's the calling it a site plan on this and, and a letter from Ed Armus? So, I mean, I could have that for you tomorrow.
Well, we, I'm sorry to jump in, but we also have SEQA review. What's our ETA on, on completion for SEQA review?
It is a small addition, so it would be considered a type two action.
Understood.
We do have to do referrals. We have to, um, refer to the, um, department, the DPW, Suffolk County Planning Commission.
Because just looking at the, the semantics of the code section, which I know I just read out to you, um, the optionality of the public hearing or not kind of comes into play, to quote it, upon determination that the application is complete.
Doesn't sound like it's complete.
So to read it again, uh, not to belabor it, but upon determination that the application is complete, comma, the planning board may at its option require the notice public hearing be held on said complete application. Optionality being the, the key word there. So.
So can, uh, can Kathy, can you give us specifically what would have to be completed for you to deem the application complete? What else do we need?
So the, the, the planning board can waive all of these if they feel that this is not needed for review of this application. If there's enough information on different, on different plans and, and getting, getting clarity from the applicant. Um, as far as Suffolk County Planning Commission, that is something that takes thirty to forty-five days. We can make a phone call and see if we can get an expedited review. Um, and, uh, the others are village agencies that we can, that, that can be much shorter. So.
But I think those I's need to be dotted. Personally, I think those I's need to be dotted and those T's crossed. So wha- what I'm willing to entertain is get as far as you can between now and June seventeenth, right? And hopefully m- most, if not all of what's still missing, uh, has been completed and distributed to the board. And then I agree, I may, I personally agree with you, I'm not speaking for the board, that, you know, the notice, the public's been noticed to death on this. If you don't know what's going on at Shippey's, you've been in a coma for the last year. Um, so waiving the, uh, wa- waiving the, uh, public hearing aspect of something I'm personally open-minded to. But I don't like short cutting an incomplete package. That's, that's my only issue.
So who will contact Suffolk County Planning Commission?
Uh, sorry, before you do, uh, anyone disagree with that or anyone have an alternative view that they'd like to go on the record with? Yep, everybody, okay. So, yeah, okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. So who will contact Suffolk County Planning Commission?
If, if the planning board determines that the application is complete with that stage, that would go through the building plan.
So they have to deem it complete in order for it to go to Suffolk County Planning Commission?
I believe that's what the, with the question. So if, with the board's permission, we can refer it to the planning commission this week.
Can you, can you refer it to Suffolk County Planning Commission? But we all know that there are still some things we're missing. So, you know, you're authorized to cut, approach them even though, yeah, we'll, we'll do that. Does that require a motion, John?
Well, do it. Let's do that one.
Do we have a motion to authorize?
Alex to go from June fourth as fast as he can.
There you go. Second all in favor. Okay.
So just to clarify as to what needs to be done in terms of deeming it complete, I need to make sure that the survey says it's a site plan and you want a letter from Ed Armus saying that he did this calcu- calculations.
Correct. And that the design that's shown on that plan, he acknowledges that that design, because it actually says that it's designed by him. So.
Okay. And that's it?
And there is a statement in the, um, village code that goes on a, on a site plan for when it is approved. Uh, that should be put it, put on the, the plan as well.
Yep. And what about the SEQA EAF?
So this is a, a type two action because it's, it's a small addition and that, that's considered, that's already been deemed a, you know, not in significant environment.
So not needed. Okay, there.
And we filled out the EAF, right?
That's not, yeah, it's required for the application, but it's not, not triggered.
Okay.
And then health, health department, I'm sorry, yeah, health department, um, is not required for this. Has, has, have you gotten any confirmation from the health department that they won't require?
Well, they would only get triggered if we were upgrading our, or if we were increasing our occupancy. As of mo- at the moment, we're considered grandfathered in. I mean, I've spoken to them, but I don't have anything in writing. We, we've, we've also made an application for the future project. We just, we're discussing that. Okay.
I'm a little unclear. Does Suffolk County have oversight when we do village projects that hit a certain threshold?
Yes.
Jesus Christ, I'm sorry. I apologize. Wow, that's amazing.
So let's see how far you, you, you get between now and the seventeenth and see how far we get with Suffolk County. And, and then make a call on the seventeenth. But, you know, we, we hear you and, you know, we, we saw the ads.
So are you, are you waiving the other agencies, the fire department and that kind of stuff?
No, if that's a requirement, they need, you need to get to them. We're not waiving.
Okay, no, cause Kathy's, Kathy said you had the ability to waive them. So I was just, so.
No, we're not.
No, that's their village agency, so it's quicker.
Yeah, we're not.
So again, are you guys going to handle them? Okay.
Yeah. The only thing we'll waive is, uh, uh, public hearing.
Okay.
And, you know, depending on what we hear back when you approach Suffolk County, you know, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Everybody, you're go- okay with that? You guys okay with that? So, um, we'll make a motion to adjourn this until the June seventeenth meeting and, um, and pick it up again then. Okay? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Pip.
So the next, next on the agenda is Hill Street Cinema and fifty-one Hill Street. Are we doing those together or separate?
We can do them together.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mitch Parker, eleven hundred Architect. All right, so, uh, nice to see everyone. We came to a pre-submission conference early this year. So maybe you have some familiarity with pro- project, um, or projects. There's, as noted in the agenda, two different, uh, property addresses here. One is forty-three Hill Street, that's the theater. One is fifty-one Hill Street, that is the adjacent property. Because they're being considered, uh, both being considered not as one project, but potentially as communicating to each other. Trying to bundle them together. Um, for forty-three Hill Street, which is the theater, the main project, doesn't have a approved site plan. So we are here to try to obtain an approved site plan so that we can redo the exterior of that. For forty-three, we have seen, um, the architectural and historical review board a couple of times and have approval from them. Um, and I believe that, uh, yeah, we don't need to go to zoning. So it's really up, just to get the site plan approved and understand what, if anything, we need to do for you to make that happen. And with fifty-one Hill Street, uh, I think I described it before, but there's, uh, an idea that, uh, ownership for forty-three might buy fifty-one and turn that into a restaurant that could be, uh, make more of a campus, so to speak, uh, with the, the theater. Um, that sale is somewhat con- or the, yeah, the, the transaction is contingent on it being approved, uh, as a restaurant. So we have, uh, gone to the board of trustees. We had to get them to, uh, approve the potential for it because of its proximity to residential district. We have gone to zoning also, um, because we need a special exemption for a new restaurant in the village and contingent on the approvals that we might obtain here. They will approve us. And, uh, we also, oh, we've also submitted to the health department. And contingent on the approvals from zoning and from planning, the health department and the SEQA, S-E-Q-R-A. I think they're also basically satisfied with the, the proposed design there. So I think we're, we've been through all of the approvals except for planning for both of these properties. And we're here to talk to you about them and, uh, see what, uh, what you think. So I don't know if you have spent time looking at these, but I can walk through them if you like. Starting with forty-three, um, I'm just going to flip to the site plan proper. Sorry, Alex. So the existing site plan you may be familiar with, um, has, uh, parking, uh, you know, it has connected to the street. It has, uh, a couple of cross-access, um, points of connection and, um, uh, paved rear yard, or, uh, paved, paved, uh, parking lot. We are proposing in the parking lot that we're to repave it and to re-stripe it and to add parking spaces. We do have parking calculations that I, I think that we more than satisfy. I, I know that we more than satisfy the requirements for the interior of the building. We can go through those specifically if you like. And we're not changing much. I think we are reconfiguring a ramp, um, to Theater One outside the building. But within the existing sidewalk, we are adding and awning to a relocated entry point into Theater Three. And we're, um, we're repaving also in, uh, uh, in cobblestone that's porous. The area way between the two buildings that's on the theater property side and, and also adjusting it so that the ADA ramping works. I think that's the majority of the content here. There are, there's lighting plan. And we have submitted those light fixtures and so forth. I'm not sure if there are questions.
I have a question. Um, the most recent version of the comprehensive master plan makes some suggestions with respect to the amount of landscaping that's required in a large parking like, parking lot like that. Are, are you aware of that and are you compliant with the, the guidelines set forth in the comprehensive master plan?
We have not, uh, we have not worked to try to comply with it because the idea was just to replace what is here essentially. But if you want me to work on that, I will, I will look at it.
Yeah, you, you should think about that.
Okay.
And, and that was the first thing I noticed. But you, you should check if there are any other things that apply in the comprehensive master plan. We'll check too. I don't recall off the top of my head, cause it's been, um, a week or two since I've looked at this.
The one thing that we were focused on was cross-access.
Yeah.
It was also identified by, um, one of the consultants.
Yeah, exactly. Cause I think earlier plans did not show cross-access. So, but I saw in the previous page that you'd put the access, access back.
Oh, yeah.
That's good.
I, yeah, I wanted to add, well, it's a, a point to talk to you about. There is existing cross-access here that I think both neighbors would prefer not to have if it's a possibility. But I wanted your opinion about the requirement or need for the cross-access here.
So, um, my opinion is what the comprehensive master plan tells me. Uh, my opinion is.
It's a good idea.
And, um, it, it strongly advocates for cross-access to reduce the amount of street traffic, uh, uh, on Hill Street there. And the traffic there is a problem. So I think that's a high priority item for us. Just in general, I think the board, um, if it's in the comprehensive master plan, you know, there has to be a good reason for us not to follow the guidelines.
Right. I understand. And, uh, just to expand on that particular point, I know that the neighbor seventy-one has been talking about, uh,
Stuff, yeah.
Doing, uh, a project. And, um, something that was shared with us was a drawing that showed the vehicular cross-access, point moving from, uh, forty-three where it exists now essentially to the rear yard of fifty-one. And I don't know if you've seen that sketch, but it was shared with us. Subsequent to that, we have, uh, engaged the neighbor in conversation about the cross-access. It doesn't actually work on fifty-one for great reasons and also because it's not, not currently paved and we're, we're not trying to pave it. And we don't own that property yet anyway. But, um, so with, uh, the, the team that I'm working with is essentially fine leaving it where, where it is. Um, but wanted me to, because I know what the, what the neighbor may want to try to change. It was just a, there's kind of a question, an open question, like, we're fine keeping it where it is. Can we move forward with our site plan as it is? Because they're not actually doing a project here as of yet.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're, the same requirements of you would be applied to them with, when and if they ever come to the planning board. And the cross-access, it works for both properties, right? That makes common sense, is going to be important to, to a decision.
Fundamentally, is there a, um, uh, I'm just wondering, there's some mention of an agreement between property owners about this, about cross-access. Is that, uh, I'm trying to ascertain whether or not if we, let's say, this is our plan, you approve it. Do we need to have agreements in place with the neighbors to have this plan approved?
That is, that is commonly how it is done. I know many properties across the town and the village that, um, cross-access easement agreements are recorded documents. They stay with the county clerk in Riverhead. Um, and they run with the lands, meaning that they're binding on successive owners.
Okay. Is that something that I need to develop or would that just be a consequence of a plan?
That would be the consequence of the plan. I could work with you once we get to that stage at, at acceptable cross-access easement language. It's very common. Um, I can think off the top of my head of three or four properties across town, the village that have reciprocal cross-access easement with neighbor and property, property owners.
Okay. All right. So, um, I understand the point about going back to the comprehensive master plan, particularly as per landscape. Are there other things that, um, are here that are of priority or objectionable or of concern that I should elaborate on?
So, uh, certainly don't want to step on the, um, into ARB or ZBA issues if it's already been addressed there. But, uh, in front of the entrance to the theater.
Yes.
What's going on with the steps there and it's kind of, it's kind of pretty funky.
Yeah, we have been.
Steps there. What's the plan with that ARB?
We have shown it to them, the way that it is, and intend to maintain it the way that it is.
And they were fine with that. Okay.
Yeah, we have shown it as staying. In fact, for the most part, there, we, we had made a couple of potential changes that they wanted us to reel back. They're, uh, they're primarily, primarily concerned with keeping it essentially the way that it is.
On those steps.
The building visage, generally speaking.
Including the steps. Yep, okay.
Yeah, I mean.
That's fine. Yeah, just curious. Okay, we won't touch that.
I don't know if there, I don't know if there's a line in any of the recording. I mean, and probably we did. I.
I'd say we see what AHRB says on that one.
I just want to make sure that somebody's looking at it and some, one of the free land use boards that you're in front of has it on their agenda, then we're, we're fine with that.
Okay. We, uh, yeah, they.
Okay. That's all, anybody?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure that they made a specific ruling on the steps, that is how we presented it to them.
Anyone else have any questions so far? Okay, sorry, please.
No, I'll move on to.
Can I, can I just ask you to run through, sorry, I'm over here, the ramp, the area that's being modified at the front, could you, could you just go through that detail with the board?
We're not planning on changing anything at the front, but the ramp, well, the rear of the building is the location. Oh, yes, sure, sorry. The finish of the, the interior finish floor is being raised by about an inch because of the finish, so we are trying to make a very small ramp, which is basically within the depth of the part of the building that is from the face of the building to where the front doors are, it's an area that's just a couple of feet long, that ramps from the existing sidewalk up an inch.
So more like a lip than a ramp?
Yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a, a long threshold so to speak, it's not, and it's compliant, it's not an out-of-compliant situation, just to mitigate the interior floor level with the existing sidewalk.
Okay. Please continue.
Okay, should I move on to the next property?
No more questions on this one? No, no, everybody good? Yeah, please.
So this one is, I'd say slightly more, there's a few more steps because of the septic design included, right now the rear yard is basically a hardscape, impervious, and the idea in, is to make that a, more of a landscaped area that is pervious. And to install the septic system that would support the restaurant underneath that area. This, this lot currently doesn't have parking, it's existing, non-compliant, where the new number of spaces is the same, the building inspector, chief building inspector ruled that, that non-compliance was okay to continue. So as I said, the only thing we asked the zoning board about was a special exemption for the, the use and.
Restaurant.
Yep, they, you know, the, the zoning approval, there is some overlap I think with this board, so their, their, but their perspective in that meeting based on council and so forth was that the planning board would be the entity, the lead, the lead agency, am I saying that right? And the review of the drainage and the septic, and if we satisfy you, then they're satisfied, so to speak, paraphrasing.
If they do it instead of us.
So I think, you know, we do have a septic design, as I said, it's also been submitted to the Health Department who's reviewed it, I think from a, from a site drainage standpoint, we're making all the surfaces imper, pervious, sorry, because there's not really enough room left on the site for drywalls. Because we don't have vehicles on the site, we're not proposing vehicular cross-access, there is an existing pedestrian cross-access that comes from seventy-one, actually doesn't go, it goes through the theater site, we are showing it being maintained or retained. Again, our approach to the cross-access question has been just keeping what's in place because it seems like the easiest solution with the, the neighbor at this point. And there is, there would be cross-access directly into the theater parking lot because it's on level, so pedestrian could traverse easily between the parking lot and the rear yard of this building.
Okay, questions?
I think, I told you once, it'll be restaurant number seventeen in the village.
It might be, yeah. I can't remember the number.
It's a shifty number, but the last time I was told, we're up to seventeen restaurants in the village.
Yeah.
It's a surprising number.
The Village Business District.
So what, what do we need to do on this?
So do we have, as far as completeness, Kathy, do we need SEQA on this, have we ran SEQA already?
So for both of these, we've done SEQA, so for fifty-one Hill Street, they need it for the Health Department, so we did a review of the par one, prepared a par two and would recommend adoption of a neg deck, same for fifty, no forty-three.
Okay, so once we adopt a neg deck, then what happens next?
We have the complete application, then we can, at our option, hold the public hearing or we can discuss it and not hold the public hearing, as I mentioned with the prior application, and within forty-five days of the finding of completeness, we can make our decision.
All right, I'm inclined to do the former, I think was the adoption of the neg deck and then move it to a public hearing, right, because I don't hear anyone that many major.
We just have to get these other approvals.
Yeah, yeah.
And we gotta do a planning. We gotta, we gotta go, Kathy is against the lead agency for the southern property to tell anybody that the planning board is lead agent for that.
Yeah.
The old car dealer, we're, we're lead agency for what was the Mercedes dealer.
We actually don't have to do a coordinated review, but the zoning board will still use the neg deck that is adopted by this board, so.
So for the neg deck, John, it's a motion?
So just for clarity too, we're also waiting on AHRB and ZBI?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but, but I mean, that's, you know, that's not this board, you know, they don't have to weigh in on that, we would do sub-County Planning Commission, same thing, we would still do the referrals as soon as we're told to, we can do that starting tomorrow for both of these applications.
Yeah, I don't see any reason not to, it doesn't sound like anyone has any issues at all with this, so no reason to not move this along expeditiously.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett has an objection.
Everyone should be aware, I represent the owner of seventy-one Hill Street, and I just wanna make sure that everyone is aware of the actual situation in terms of cross-access. There is no cross-access agreement between this parcel and seventy-one Hill Street, either pedestrian or for vehicular. Actually, there's a lawsuit filed against the village regarding cross-access, which we've been pushing forward because there is a, an approval from the trustees for a resort hotel there, and it's being modified now, but we've been pushing that litigation forward in hopes to come to some sort of agreement regarding the cross-access, but there is no cross-access between seventy-one and the, and the movie theater property. Indeed, there is no agreement, live agreement as far as I'm know, I know, I'm aware of regarding the, the movie theater property, there was an agreement that expired some time ago, it was agreement between the village and the prior owner of the property. The only cross-access agreement that's etched in stone on these properties is, there was a zoning board of appeals application some time ago for what I call the La Caressa Building, and, and as a result of that ZBA approval, they were able to get a cross-access agreement, so that's the only in concrete link-up there. I would just caution that before anyone makes any determinations where that should go, you've got, you've got in effect another, a partner involved in this, so it's, the determination is gonna be this board, this applicant, and, and seventy-one Hill Street.
Understood.
So I just, I, I, before someone, anyone gets too far down the road on this stuff, they should be aware of all those facts.
Can you just indicate on the map exactly just where you're talking about?
Seventy-one Hill Street is the, is the, it's the Southampton Hotel and then the portion to the, to the east.
East of Radeway.
Excuse me?
East of Radeway.
East of Radeway, thank you.
The Hawtara Building?
Yeah.
Well, the Hawtara Building.
It's really the.
It's the Jason Bill into the west.
I think it borders like this entire, both, the, the, the side of both properties.
Where's the La Carisa? What's the La Carisa building, where's that?
Oh, the La Caressa Building's on Windmill, that's where it's.
So that has nothing to do.
Well, no, it's actually the link from Windmill through this property, through the movie theater property, through to the hotel.
But isn't there a curb cut or a break, that's where you have your finger, that's right, that's open now or there's a chain across that?
There, it's paved, but there's a chain across it.
Okay, got it, okay. All right, that chain's been up for a couple of years?
The chain's been up because, as far as I know, the owner, the new owner of the movie theater put it up because there was a prior agreement that it expired.
Got it, okay, all right, so.
The village and the movie theater owner had an agreement many, many years ago for cross-access and parking and stuff like that, but that expired.
Understood.
I think everyone's gotta sit down and, and everyone has to sit down and figure this out, some true coordination.
And just for the board's identification, so cross-access easement, I mentioned before, I know Mr. Bennett's very well aware of it, it's very common, and planning boards are unable to request cross-access easement, but there's nothing that demands us or that would bind us to, to demand or to need a cross-access easement. If we find that, language of the statute here, our code, proposed traffic access ways are adequate, number with great alignment of visibility located in proper relationship with intersections, pedestrian crossings, place of public assembly or in conformance with overall traffic safety considerations, we can be satisfied on that basis.
Your predecessor board specifically requested it on seventy-one, was, was that ever reported? Or was anything? The, the site plan hasn't come to fruition, but your predecessor board requested it on seventy-one, correct Alex?
Cross-access between?
Seventy-one and forty-three.
Seventy-one and forty-three.
Got it.
The planning board at the time felt that it was, it should be required.
Right, and presumably at some point, any expansion of the Southampton would have to come in front of the planning board as well, right?
Well, seventy-one.
Seventy-one, yeah.
I don't wanna bore everybody with the history, but there, there is an approval from the trustees on a resort hotel now.
Yep.
There was some back and forth with the ZBA, the ARB and the planning board, and as Alex is well aware, we're trying to redesign it at this point, but there is an existing approval.
Understood.
What the applicant didn't like was the way that the cross-access was being conflated with, with cross-parking, that's why there's a lawsuit here.
Understood.
We think there might be some ability to require cross-access.
But is the.
It's a sui generis thing, but cross-parking is something else.
Is the, are the trustees approving a site plan for that or is the planning?
Mr. Bennett, I don't know if you have any fingertips, you have the index number for that case?
Too many papers. Who, who, who does the site plan approval for?
Nikas Hamlin.
Yeah, not the trustees.
The trustees approve the use.
Exactly.
The trustees approve the use, but they also do approve a site plan.
He's saying something different.
Wouldn't be the first time, but they approve a site plan.
When you said they felt it should be required, so where did they leave it, the prior board felt it should be required, is there, there's a, they, they put an order? They put a condition in, and it's still there, so that would govern us as well, wouldn't it, it still exists?
Well, there would be a new site plan application presumably.
So the condition of approval or, is approval is recorded against seventy-one?
No, it's not, there is nothing yet, but the only etched in stone site cross-access agreement is, sorry.
No, no, listen, no, listen.
That's the only one that has.
It has the yoga place too, above, and the parking, and it's right along the parking for the movie theater.
So if I'm looking down the, I don't know the street, just name of the street, so the library is on the right-hand side, taken out of our hand.
Right-hand parking lot, no, across the street, you're like, it's like the white building that's the utility and then you hit.
Oh, okay, I understand, so you're heading west, you're heading south at that point, south.
On the right, on the right.
John, can you just give this to John?
All right, so we still have one more.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight the issue.
I appreciate knowing the whole picture.
And I know Liz has been waiting patiently back there, John is, John, what do we need to do on this one?
So let me, let me look into what Mr. Bennett mentioned, but I would say that, you know, pending discussion, as I said, nothing binds us to look necessarily at a cross-access easement or a possibility of that, as long as we find that proposed traffic access way is adequate, that it meets its parking calculations, that it meets everything else, we can, I'll explore what's going on with the.
Have a board, your predecessor board said that they wanted access there, where would the access go otherwise?
That's not the question I'm, that's, that's not the question I'm asking, I'm asking, do we need to do a neg deck here and move, and to, so we need a motion, right?
Correct.
Two separate motions.
Two separate.
For each, each parcel.
So the wording of the motion would be?
A motion to task, would you like to draft it?
I just think it should be to adopt a negative declaration for the property at forty-three Hill Street.
At forty-three.
And the property separately, same for fifty-one Hill Street.
Two motions.
Yep.
So a motion for a negative declaration at forty-three Hill Street, please, second, all in favor. A motion for, yes, yeah, for fifty-one Hill Street, for negative declaration, second, all in favor, okay.
I have these for your side.
Yeah, and then we need a motion to schedule a hearing on this for seventeenth?
Yeah.
We couldn't do.
We can't.
Seventeenth, please, it's a twenty-one day.
Day notice, so we'll do.
The third?
I believe it's July first.
July first, okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, the fourth is, the, July fourth is a Thursday, right? So the meeting on the first will occur.
So, yeah, so far, yeah, a second or a sec, so a motion to adjourn this to a public hearing on July first, our meeting at July first, right? Second, thank you, all in favor?
And sorry, I wanna move everything along, but just so I can understand it also, just one last time, about the cross-access piece, our, our goal is to open the movie theater again as soon as we can, and to do that, I think I need a site plan approved so that I can do a little bit of exterior work here. I, I wanna understand what we have to do to get that site plan approved, particularly as it relates to the cross-access with seventy-one, because we're willing to keep it where it is or slide it over if we need to or get rid of it, but I just, I'm just wondering, are we going to be, is, do we need to coordinate with the neighbor and get them to agree to something so that we can get a site plan approval, or will you be able to approve this site plan without their agreement, because they have, they're, they're suing the village, right?
I think what, correct me wrong with the board, then the pass is allowing for an area to be shown on the site plan for future cross-access pending a site plan.
Correct, and I know the town does that, I've, I've seen that on one occasion, we could definitely do that, or we could choose to be satisfied if the plan otherwise meets all of our site plan criteria, meets parking, meets, you know, adequate ingress egress, we don't necessarily have to demand the cross-access easement, if all, all parking, traffic access.
So let's do what Alex said, let's show it for now, I think, I wanna check in with the trustees on this to see exactly what's happening, we need to get smarter on the status of this lawsuit.
Questions where you show it? I don't have any problem with you moving this thing as long and quickly as possible, but the question is where you show it, you said, put it one place here, one place there, cross-access only works, if it goes, if it's like this.
Yeah.
So all I'm saying is, you gotta keep that stuff in mind.
We will, well, I'll read up on this.
In terms of, in terms of the criteria, you've already made a determination, your predecessor board, that you want it.
Exactly.
So I'm scratching my head when somebody's saying.
I would suggest it for now, if you can agree, I mean, I agree on it, but it's not, we could show our area, the general area where future cross-access.
Alex, the area has to work with the adjoining lot, doesn't it?
I'm not saying a specific area, I'm saying a general area.
What do you mean enough, it, it, it either has to work with the adjoining lot or it doesn't happen, but yeah, this is in cross-access.
I, I would show it as the existing access that is there now and then possibly to be moved based on a future decision.
Let me get you, Alex, that's fine with me.
We work together. If this evolves, if this evolves between now and the first of July, then someone will be in touch with you and we'll amend it before that meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna dispense with the minutes approval, we'll kick that to the next meeting, and the only thing left on the agenda is fifty-four Main, which I'm gonna recuse myself and turn the gavel over to Alan, who will do this. Sorry. Sorry for having you wait so long, but appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Here are some amended notes for the board. Can you page the board? Yeah. Okay, good evening, board members. I'm Liz Vale, I'm with Greenberg Traurig, Twenty-three Seventeen Montalk Highway in Bridgehampton. And this is my third time before the board. This is a continued public hearing from the last time I was here. We took the comments from the board last time and amended our plan to show a proposed flag with a dedicated flag access, which is what the majority of feedback was from the board. So now we have, again, this is a two-lot subdivision at Fifty-four North Main Street. Proposed Lot One is in the rear. This area is zoned R seven-point-five, which requires seventy-five hundred square foot per lot, and we're proposing a thirty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty square foot lot. Proposed Lot Two is in the front with the improved office building, and that lot is proposed at thirty-two thousand seven-hundred-and-forty square feet. This area is zoned R twenty, so we have a split-zone property. Um, we have a pre-existing non-conforming wood shop in the back. We are proposing to make this residential, this use, which is a conforming use. It would be eliminating the pre-existing non-conforming, um, wood shop in the back, and again, substituting the conforming residential use. So the last time we were here, the chairman had said that the board prefers dedicated deeded access for a flag, which is what you now have before you. This is the same plan that was approved in December, September of 2020. You issued a negative declaration on this, um, so we're here seeking approval of this sketch plan from you tonight. We have neighbors' letters in support. We also have a neighbor who was patient enough to wait tonight, Ms. Van Allen, and also Mr. Bennett, who's a neighboring property owner as well, who are here to speak on, on behalf of the applicant, in support of the application. So I'll, I'll speak again after they go. Thank you.
Okay. If I may, my name is John Bennett. I own Sixty Hilda Street and I own Sixty-One Jennings Avenue, both of which properties that were noticed, uh, for the public hearing. Uh, it's been...
You're in the back, you're in the, in the back to the east.
Excuse me?
You're in the back.
To the east, to the east and to the southeast, yeah. But they both, they just barely meet the two-hundred-feet requirement. I've watched this, uh, I've watched this whole application with, um, a, and I'm fully in support. I've watched this whole application with, to, to say bemusement would be, um, a difficulty, and, and I think any, any way you can move this along would be only fair and equitable. The applicant is extinguishing a pre-existing non-conforming light industrial use. A, a trade contractor, uh, proposing one single-family residence, where the zoning would give him four, um, so you have the elimination of non-conforming uses and a reduced-density subdivision. Uh, I don't, I, to be honest with you, I've been a land use lawyer and planning lawyer, and a former planning board lawyer, um, for, I guess, a total of forty-two years. If anyone can tell me the functional distinction between fee ownership and an easement for fee, I'll be a monkey's uncle, because there just ain't none. Uh, but if that's what the board wants to do, and send them back to the zoning board of appeals, where the zoning board of appeals already told them they wanted it by easement, this is the sort of stuff that people scratch their head. Uh, Bill Corl is a great citizen, always has been, every single thing that Billy Corl does, and I've been happy to know him for fifty-five years. He does it in a class way. He rebuilt the house just to the north of this site in a beautiful way. I'm sure he's frustrated. Uh, this is the sort of thing that should be encouraged, not put through unnecessary delay. And so with anything that you can do to move this application along, I think it would be, uh, it would be, uh, only fair. I would say, I would go so far that a refusal of this application would be misfeasance if not malfeasance. This is an application where it is doing everything that the code tells you to do, reducing non-conforming uses, reducing density. Uh, that driveway back to the back, what will be the back parcel, has been there forever. It's been there when Billy's grandfather had the property, when, when Billy's dad, Ed Corl, had the property and his uncle, and there's not going to be any change in the access point. That would have absolutely no effect on surrounding properties. That's been the access point to the back for probably sixty, seventy, eighty years. So I'd ask you to do anything that you can to help Mr. Corl, who's a fine citizen, and always does the right thing along. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
My name is Sarah Van Allen. I live at Forty-nine North Main Street, which is directly across from this driveway. My sofa sits maybe seventy-five feet from the driveway. I have never had any problem with the driveway. I'd like to also remind this group that that is in one of the most historic districts of the village. There were, um, whaling captains that lived surrounding that property. In the, my house housed the first lending library in the village of Southampton. It was known as the North End. It's the original part, part of, the original part of the settlement. And the applicant is offering to return part of that property back to a residential area. I have not spoken to any of my neighbors that feel that this isn't just an unbelievable gift of the applicant to change it from the non-conforming use back to residential use. So I completely support this, as do every neighbor that I've spoken to, which include a few that had to leave, but that I know that we're here to support it. Flaglot issues. I'm not a scientist. I don't know. I went to Google Maps. I counted seventeen flaglots along First Neck Lane, going from... I counted two on North Main Street. I don't cross the highway. I just stick to the old North End. So to object to it as a flaglot, ironically, one of those flaglots is exactly parallel to this particular driveway that has been there for a very, I mean, we're talking over fifty years. So that I just hope that, that the board realizes in planning for the, for the future of the village that we maintain this historic district, and the applicant is making every effort to return it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I did, um, I did just want to note that I checked the files today. The fire marshal did approve of this plan. He has a stamped approved plan. It's in the ZBA file, if you want to get it. Um, so we can certainly update this to show his changes on the access. But he did say the access was safe and adequate for the residential lot in the back, because that was raised at the last meeting. Um, and then additionally, since this is a flag and a dedicated flag, which is what you wanted, we did submit last time all of the flaglots that are in Southampton Village. We submitted a list, a statement in support with a list of prior subdivisions approved by this board with flaglots. We showed how we met the flaglot law. So I'm hoping we can get this sketch plan approved, so we can move forward with ZBA as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to hear some feedback from the board, um, to just get a sense, a good sense of how you feel about the plan.
I, I can only tell you that I was involved with approval of, or over four years ago. I thought it would, everyone thought it would be done by then, by now. You've had a lot of holdups, and you're a valiant lawyer dealing with it. I guess the plumbing and everything else. Everybody wants the, the, the house back there. It's unanimous. The, the planning board wanted it before, no problem. This area has been known for a long time with that wood shop. I knew it as a wood shop, building things. I was the customer. Mr. Wild, I did, all sorts of people. He's before Carl. This was the area of disputes over animals with the former mayor. I mean, all, this is, this is a model of the founding, founding, they lost stuff going on in their neighborhood. People have come to the building department to say, "It's fantastic. Get the Carls to build two houses," all sorts of issues. It focuses a lot of attention on that neighborhood. The only issue that we have is, partly because of the plan, it was just delivered twelve years later. And if you've gotten it from an easement to a flaglot, that was our objection last time you came. We just said, "We may want the zoning board, but we really feel a, a larger duty wherever we can take..." It, it, but not to just have easements, but to have flaglots, where their, where ownership of that flag is in the entity moving forward, and it takes a whole realm of possible future disputes over property owners in the dense village. It's in between the property owners, not involving the trustee units, or it's... But if, if this now changed, even, even with fifteen feet, and with this...
It's eighteen feet at its, its most narrow width, twenty-five feet at the front, at the front edge.
It's, it's, the, the building was enlarged by the Carls about, I'm going to say, forty years ago. They enlarged the building to go nearer to the fence, and so it's, it's pretty close. And there's parking in the back, because there's a mission to get into the back, too. The only issue is that if, if we worked out with the new property, thank goodness it's, the house is going on for access back there.
So now this is the flag?
Including parking behind and, and the front, that's fine.
Okay.
That's, that's the property owner's problem.
Mm-hmm.
But that's my personal view.
Okay, great.
And I've, I've studied, as, as some people in this room know, flaglots versus easements for decades. I've measured about thirty of them.
I hope you come to ZBA with me.
Listen, hey, I can, I'd love to deal with the ZBA.
Great.
I'll, I'll be your assistant.
Did I have one thing as a neighbor also that wants to see this happen? I think it's appropriate for you to send a resolution to the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
Letting them know...
The memo didn't work last time.
Do you want the flat, because they were, to say that they were obstreperous, uh, and didn't care what you said?
This is not, not the time, it's going to be personal views. Excuse me? It's not the time or the occasion for me to give you personal views about the zoning board.
No.
But I agree with you.
Yes, we need, a little, we had a memo last time, and it was not sufficient to persuade them. So I would ask that the board, that's a great idea, John, that the board would consider a resolution in favor of granting variances for the flag versus the easement. I would like to hear from the other board members as well.
I think that you've made a very strong case. I find the letters very persuasive, and I think that we're probably ready to vote, and I'd like to know who would write that letter that will go to the zoning and finally put this to rest. Would that be you, John?
If you so authorize me, correct.
Shall we vote, or...
I recommend, because of stuff that, uh, may not, I haven't read it. There are changes afoot in the administration of a number of boards in the village, and I think the letter is just fine. Probably needs to go after July first. I can, I, I couldn't agree more. There is supposed to be, after years of effort, conversations on a regular basis by the heads, which, uh, very properly, he's had to recuse himself, of heads of boards, zoning, and ARB, and planning, and they meet, I think, weekly, pretty often, to discuss cases and discuss image. And it's been a moving target for council, to the trustees, to council that have been changing in the last five years constantly, but there's a focus on trying to keep it organized. But a, a letter be just fine, as far, as far as I'm concerned. I think it just needs to go after July first.
Well, we would at least seek your, um, approval this evening.
So Catherine, Alex, what is our next step then, here? Would Mark, have he stepped out?
We...
So, um, it's a, to close the public hearing, and to, um, I guess, do a straw poll to, to vote for a written decision, um, but I think you could vote. I mean, it's really authorizing the same thing that was authorized back in twenty-twenty-one September.
So we'll do motion.
And just to give the board clarity, um, I know this is, we spoke about it earlier in the meeting, but the idea of a sketch plan is general layout.
And it wouldn't necessarily be a voting, you'd be directing council to prepare a decision that you vote on at the next meeting, or whatever such.
Mm-hmm. So you can do two separate resolutions if you'd so like, um, one directing me to do the, the resolution, and another directing me, if you so choose, to write a res, a draft resolution to be directed to the zoning board of appeals.
I realize that's unusual, but I think in light of the history of this case, it's a good idea.
Yeah, thank you.
As long, as long as you accept the timing of number two. I think we can accept the motion, if somebody can second it, we'll ask for it.
Alan, would you like to propose, propose the motion?
I'll, I'll propose. Will you approve this plan of development of the, of the lot, the room, with a, uh, flaglot as outlined by council?
Mm-hmm, second.
Second, do you?
All in favor?
Okay, for it. And then I will instruct council to, with proper deliberation, approximately July one, be able to deliver a complaint to the zoning board.
Resolution, you mean?
A resolution from this board to, uh, help them focus better and align with what we think is the right duties that we, we assume. Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Do we, what was the vote on the last, the second prong?
Well, I don't think you need to vote.
Let's just do a vote, please.
Okay, he's, he's out of the room. We'll do a vote, okay. I propose the vote for, of the letter?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
You'll provide a digital copy of the plan you submitted to the board?
Yes, yes. I want to make sure we do the one that has the fire marshal approval.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Should we grab the chair?
Yes.
He just went out for this particular issue. He was, had a conflict?
Yeah.
Because it was what?
Because it was now...
Yes.
Yeah, oh, sorry, I'm going to, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
I was, I was going to ask Mark, with respect to the April fifteenth minutes, we never approved them, but they're ready.
Oh, okay.
Aren't they? Yeah, they've been, they've been published. Yeah, yeah, so, uh, April fifteenth was never approved, the minutes of that meeting, or May six?
I, I checked my resume on the...
Those are the ones you're talking about?
It hadn't been, because I had...
So that was a long time ago?
I definitely sent it out before I could reset.
Would you please...
I think that was a long time ago.
I got it, I got it.
That's what I, that's what I just thought. And I think there's another one, actually. I haven't, I don't know if I saw the other one.
Right.
So let's revisit that. So the April fifteenth minutes, motion to approve those.
April fifteenth, I saw.
Yeah, everybody's seen those, so, um, second, all in favor? Okay. What's the next?
The May six month I did send you, that was the one where I did ask for, will you got email on that? So if you guys did get them, if you didn't see that attached, I can make that...
And is there one after that, May six?
No.
Okay, so the May six one, I haven't reviewed, you haven't reviewed, have you seen, have you reviewed?
I will send them to you.
But let's, so May six we'll get next meeting, okay?
Sure.
Um, motion to...
We, we made a motion.
To adjourn?
To approve this with a flaglot.
You can't tell, you, I don't want to know.
The motion, you will get, you'll be in minutes. We're going to get council to send, on or after July one, a letter to the zoning board, of this board complaining about the actions they took with respect to this.
I didn't say complaining, just, we're not going to complain about there, we're just going to, a recommendation, or actually, an explanation that we've seen it, and now we've...
And so just to confirm, the next meetings are going to be Monday, June seventeenth, and Monday, July first, just so we can ensure that we have a forum.
What, excuse me, what dates?
It's going to be Monday, June seventeenth, and Monday, July first.
June seventeenth, yes, and July first.
Okay.
Got it.
Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? We need a third hand here. There we go.
Thank you.
Motion.
Deborah, Deborah Tanev.
Thanks, everyone.